Okay, we'll call it to order this August the 7th, 2019, meeting of the Franklin County Commission, roll call.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Commissioner Dickinson.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear only Father, we stand before you as humble servants. As we experience yet another rain event, we just pray for each one that is involved. We pray for those that are traveling. We pray for the workers that are out working in it. We pray for the road department who will have to fix the roads that are going to be affected. You have been faithful to us in all things, and we just ask that you help us to be faithful as we set the budget for next year, as we conduct the business of the county. Just be with us in all that we do. Amen.
Thank you, Ms.
Takes us to correspondence and organizational business. Okay, anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
James Wallace?
James Wallace, 2447 Nebraska Road. I'd just like to invite any county commissioner, any interested party, to come out and look at Nebraska Road and Kingman Road, a mile east of the new road on Kingman and Montana. If you come out now while it's raining, you can see water running down the middle of the road and both shoulders of the road. And the ditches are full of gravel, so it can't get to the ditches, and it's got to go over a hump, even if it could get to the ditch. And the parking lot's getting kind of deep, too, but thought you might be interested.
Anyone else? Okay, takes us to the consent agenda. Items today that need to be considered and approved are the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for July the 31st, 2019, and the study session minutes for August the 5th, 2019. So no claim vouchers or tax change orders, so we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion's our second.
Second. Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to our first item of business, approval of rezoning application 1906-1688 to rezone approximately 5.86 acres from an A1 district to an RE zoning district.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you've indicated, this is a request to rezone approximately five acres from the agricultural zone to the RE residential estate zone. The purpose for this is to sell that to a member of the family for residential purposes. The applicant will retain the remaining acreage for agriculture. That is consistent with the intent and purpose of our goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. And the planning commission, after reviewing this matter, has forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of this rezoning based on their findings and subject to the provisions set forth in the draft resolution that was attached as a part of your staff report.
And now the ordinary appears on this, do several of these. Any questions on this for Larry? If not, with a motion to approve rezoning application 1906-1688 to rezone 5.86 acres from an A1 to an RE zoning district.
I would make that motion.
Motion's our second.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Item number two, approval of a special use permit application 1906-1686 to permit the construction and operation of a 90-foot guide internet tower in an A2 zoning district.
As you've indicated, this is a special use permit application to allow for the construction and operation of a small cell tower. It's 90 foot in height, and that may appear to be not such a small tower, but actually it's just used for their own reception. Some of the areas are pretty difficult to get, certain receptions. This is about, it's located about two miles north of the Avenue School. This is in an area that's kind of a dead zone, and consequently, they need to get up that extra elevation to be able to get reception. We did give notice to five surrounding property owners. One of the owners of the land within that thousand-foot radius did appear before the planning commission and was concerned that there, and I think it was a misunderstanding, she thought this was a full-blown communication tower such as AT&amp;T and some of the others that we have throughout the county. And after she learned that it was just there for the individual reception, it wasn't a transmission tower, and so she was generally satisfied with the decision then to approve this special use permit application. And the planning commission has now forwarded a recommendation to you for the approval of this, subject to the findings and the conditions that are set forth in that draft resolution. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
Want to have any questions on this? Okay, if not, we'll look for approval of the special use permit application 1906-1686 to construct and operate a 90-foot guide internet tower in an A2 zoning district.
Motion to approve.
Motion's our second.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, consider and accept the Sunflower Agreement for $26,500 to the Wellsville Coalition Expansion. Mitch?
Morning. This is a new opportunity from the Sunflower Foundation in Topeka to address disparity just the social determinants of health. We've been working with the Wellsville School and they, and other agencies in Wellsville to expand health and wellness there under the Pathways Grant. This would actually expand or enable us to work with the school further, have a coordinator, which would probably be Sheila again, to pull in more people into the coalition, working directly with the school, and working directly to enhance opportunities for children who have issues, if you will, or needs that aren't being met or can't be met in the educational setting without additional help. So this is really just to help pay salary for those individuals and develop that broader coalition for future health improvements. The school has agreed they'd pass a physical activity policy that meets the Kansas State Board of Education, one of their wellness requirements, and be a modeling policy, so we're excited to be able to do this. But our role is really to facilitate this grant and help that coalition expand locally, so I try to answer any questions I can. Any approval?
Questions? Okay, if there's no questions, we'll look for a motion to accept the Sunflower Agreement for $26,500 for the Wellsville Coalition Expansion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
All second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
It's crazy we have to vote to whether we're going to take money or not, but yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, item number four, they're just going to be staying up here, consider for approval the APRN contract for services.
We've been contracting with Health Partnership Clinic since they hired our APRN out from under us, but anyway, we've been contracting for Patty to come back and work twice a month for us for the famine planning program. This is the same contract, basically, as we've had in the past, but it was time to update and renew. The cost has not changed, so we just need approval for this contract. It'll be, the total amount will be no more than $20,000 a year, and it's run around $16,000 a year for those services.
And how long is this contract?
It's for one year. Yeah.
Pretty cut and dried. Any questions? Okay, if not, we'll look for a motion to approve the APRN contract for services. Have a motion's our second.
Second.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
May I ask you a question? Just kind of a little off, but curious, where are you about to end your Pathways Grants?
Actually, the Pathways Grant, we were in the first round of grants. There've been two rounds. Because it took quite a while to get that grant going, Blue Cross actually has given round one applicants, if we met, if they met a goal of distributing X number of dollars, which we did, year four. So we actually are eligible for an additional $100,000, which begins August 1st, actually.
Oh, okay.
And so they're going to extend that for one year. After that, we're, you know, it's up in the air what Blue Cross is going to do with that program.
I had somebody ask me, uh...
Yeah, so we're excited to have another gear to work with this.
Sure, yeah.
You bet.
Thank you.
Item number five, consider and approve a bid from Bones Landscaping Company to update the landscape in front of the EMS building at 219 East 14th Street, along with backfilling the east side of the building.
Morning, Commissioner. Um, we are in need of getting some landscaping work done. There hasn't been any real landscaping work done since the addition of that building back in about 2000, or about 1999. The rock and stuff in the front's old, the trim's falling down. It really looks like it needs some update. The other thing, some of you remember, about seven or eight years ago, we had the east side wall mud jacked, lifted up. At that time, they backfilled it, and that's all settled. So with the rain we're having, with everything that's going on, we're really getting a lot of pooling. With talking to Bones, I've asked them what options we had to maybe get the gutters to go away. Right now, if you drive by, there's four-inch tubing laying out, kind of dumping it in the middle of the yard. There's options to bury some pipe to get it away so it looks better, and do that. So what I've asked them is to give us a bid on taking that front rock area, making it look a little more professional, a little nicer, and also doing the renovations and fixing of the backfilling, the gutter system on the east side. The bid for that was $3,720. That does include quite a bit of shrubs, that kind of stuff. I do want to have a little ability to backscale out as we go forward. That's the maximum amount of money we would spend. We have that money in our equipment reserve, but as I sit down with them and we start looking at the shrubbery and the stuff in the front, we may not go that high. But I did go with the full bid, and then I want Brandon to be involved. We'll sit down with them when they come and figure exactly what we want to do on the shrubs and the rock. So that's what's going on, so if I could get a motion to bid to accept that and move forward. I have talked to other landscape companies, I will tell you. They're backed up so much that it would be fall before we got it done with the rain, the way this is settling. I did talk to the guys from Bones, and they are able to get here within a couple of weeks of the approval of this, so we can get that taken care of and backfilled. So that's why I have chosen to look at them and go that route.
You don't have any more settling problem with that, have you, Nick?
We have not, no. It's settled, or it's stabilized since we jacked it up.
Important to keep water away from your foundation. You haven't had any water in the building.
No, it's a slab, so it's what it would basically, and there's a four-inch pier on the outside, it's just...
Yeah, you need to get that done, so yeah.
We need to get that taken care of.
Get some dirt in there.
This rain has really shown the pooling of it and that, so it's time to fix it somehow.
Anything else on this? Okay, if not, we'll look for a motion to approve the bid from Bones Landscaping Company in the amount of $3,720 to update the front of the EMS building and also backfill the east side of the building.
Still moved?
Motion's our second.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, item number six, discuss and approve the January through June 2019 EMS report.
Before we get started on this, I'd like to take and have Nikki stand up. As you know, Pam retired in the middle of this year. We've hired Nikki Dozer to be our medical account manager, so since March, she's been in learning the ropes and getting everything settled in where she wants it, so I just wanted to take a moment to introduce her to you, because she's the one that will be helping me make sure these reports are accurate, so.
Welcome aboard, glad to have you.
I was looking at your shoes, because those are pretty big shoes you have to fill, but... Yeah, yeah.
All right, so the report, we have had a lot going on the first part of this year, so I haven't got a lot of information to you, so we're going to knock six months out real quick. I, we'll jump straight to June. You can see we've had a pretty good call volume. We've had, to the end of June, 1,879 calls, which is up 61 calls from 2018, and up roughly, if you go back to '17, we have about 100 and some calls from '17 to that time. So we're seeing an increase slowly with call volume. Revenues have maintained really good. We have deposited $611,623.78 for revenues, $28,390 of that's been through education. So we have completed an EMT class, we've completed an AEMT class, plus our education that we offer with our ACLS and PALS, so we're seeing, the education department's still pulling their own very well. To make it easier to read, if we go to the next page where it breaks out and gives you a little bit bigger print, we'll go across on the revenue stuff. So the six-month total, as I said, is $611,623.78. With decent revenues, we'll always have large adjustments, so for the six months, we have $382,887.05 in adjustments. That's mandatory write-off Medicaid, Medicaid, or Medicare insurance, death with no estate, that kind of stuff. We have sent a total of $80,251.85 to the state set off, and $25,926.62 to Midwest Collections. Total charges for the six months is $1,070,453.82. So we, right now, with the collectible debt that we can collect on, we're right about 89%. So we're seeing some good things happening with it. We're making some changes with, there's some options with different billing programs that allow us to look at insurance, so if somebody has insurance, we can see if their deductible's met. We can go back and find out if maybe they qualify different, for different kinds of insurance, or they qualify for Medicaid to help with that. So we've looked at some different options. Any questions on the collection report? Okay, page five, this is a January to June total on EMS data, so you can see where we're dropping patients off at. We have taken 824 patients to Advent Ottawa. We've taken 95 patients to Advent Shawnee Mission, and the other large one we drop off at, so it's at 179. We jump over to the refusal. We have had, out of our total call volume of 1,879, we've had 417 refusals, which is a 22% refusal rate. Where a lot of that comes from is, if you remember, towards the beginning of the year, we had a lot of snow, a lot of ice, that kind of stuff, so we did see a lot of refusals on medical, or on car wrecks where people slid off in ditches, that kind of stuff. So the other one we're still targeting heavy is left assist. We have a lot of people that we go pick up off the ground. They slide out of their chairs. We have a heavy gravitational pull at times in Ottawa, I think, but with that being said, we're still working on that with our fall prevention programs, our community paramedics and stuff, working real close with Advent for our fall prevention programs. So we're trying to keep that and see if we can continue to get that one down. As you can tell with the diabetics, we've been very successful with trying to get that one taken care of, so hopefully we can target the falls and get that also. Other than that, I am open for any questions that you might have.
What consists of a false medical alarm?
Medical alarms are when somebody has the pin that they wear around their neck, that kind of stuff. And when it says the medical alarm, that's somebody laying in bed, and they have that on their wrist, or they have it on their neck, and they roll over and hit the button, and we go wake them up and tell them to reset their thing. Does that make sense? What does all that, and it does happen a lot. There's been quite a few times we've had to go into somebody's house and we scare the heck out of them because they're sleeping and don't realize they pushed that pin down. And what we've found, too, is a lot of them now work cellularly instead of on a home phone. So we've had people that have pushed them at Walmart, and the address is their house, so we get to their house and find out that nobody's even home, and their alarm went off. So as technology advances, that's kind of a growing concern on how to locate some of these people.
You run hot to these?
That's a great question. Since they're unknown medicals, you know, if, we don't know if somebody has had a heart attack and pushed, yes, we do. I will tell you on the dispatch side, just to give you a heads up on what we're looking at, we are one month away from being able to apply for accreditation for emergency medical dispatching. As I've told you guys, the dispatchers have done that, done EMD for almost 20 years and never met the accreditation standards. What that allows us to do is prioritize calls better, so like the prioritization of calls is Alpha, Bravo, Delta, and Echo. Alpha and Bravo are pretty much, somebody slipped out of their chair, they may have a little bit of pain, non-life threatening. We're going to be looking at altering our response codes, so let's say, I get asked a lot of times, why does it look like a parade at 15th Street going to the nursing home? Hopefully, we can prioritize those, so if it's not life-threatening, we'll be backing our response off. If you look at standards out there, you're not really saving a lot of time by running emergent anyway, you know, two or three minutes. So we will be looking at different options now that we're meeting those standards and able to show that we're doing it. So hopefully, we'll be able to do a little bit better and not be responding to all these that way, or with some of the less apparatus. This should also help our first responders by, you know, we are in a major shortage of first responders. We've got communities where we don't get it during the day. So if we can maybe qualify or justify these calls a little better, we won't be calling them out as much, and not see that shortage as bad.
Had any issues with responding with road conditions?
We have not had issues with it. I will tell you, with the flooding we have had, the EOC has met. We were very good with knowing kind of what was going on. The communication was good. I know we're talking about looking at some mapping server or something that's going to give us a lot more up-to-date information, but as far as this last flood, it was very, very well relayed on where stuff was at. We did utilize the CAD system, which is a computer dispatch system in dispatch, which did allow us to see the closings and that, and come up with alternative routes.
If not, I would look for a motion to approve the adjustment and collections for January through June of 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion's our second.
Second. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoudamire?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, and also I want to let you know, we will be receiving our remount today, so we'll be back to fully staffed up with trucks, so thank you.
Okay, item number seven, our last item, consider approving the submission of two applications for the Kansas Department of Transportation Local Off-System Bridge Program to replace Bridge Number 17.6-20 and Bridge Number 16.6-12.1. David?
Commissioners, KDOT is accepting applications for the, this local off-system bridge program for the 2021 fiscal year for KDOT. I believe the cutoff date is next week. In conjunction with our bridge consultant, we've selected a couple of bridges that we would like to put forward. The reason for putting two bridges forward, it's a competitive program. KDOT estimates that there's 3,800 bridges in the state that are eligible for this program, and so we would like to throw our hat in the ring a couple of times here to hopefully come, come away with at least one. And quite frankly, one is all we're going to get, if we get any. And so we would like to put these two forward. Bridge 17.6-20 is on Texas Road, just, just a little way south of Sand Creek Road. This bridge has a sufficiency rating of 25, and that sufficiency rating is zero to 100, so this is a very low rating. The bridge is also, the roadway is also very narrow at that, at that bridge structure, less than 14 feet. The bridge that we're proposing to put in would be, would have a 26-foot-wide roadway. Estimated cost for that bridge is 480, just right at $485,000 with a local match. Through this program, it's an 80/20 program, so we would be responsible for 20% of that, which is right at $97,000. The other bridge is Bridge Number 16.6-12.1. This is located on Osborne Terrace, just west of Eisenhower Terrace. If, if you watched the news last week, when the, one of the news channels was showing an overhead shot of the water streaming over a bridge next to the railroad, that's this bridge that we're talking about here. This bridge is, has a little bit higher sufficiency rating at 42, but it is a fracture-critical bridge, which the state and really all over the country, they're working to eliminate these fracture-critical bridges. The most, probably the most highest-profile example of a fracture-critical bridge failing is the one that occurred in Minneapolis several years ago, where their main highway system, lots of people lost their lives. So when a fracture-critical bridge fails, it can be catastrophic, and the, you know, the whole thing can, can fail at once. And so we're working to eliminate those. I think we've only got three or four left in the county, and so we'd like to put this one forward. This one is a little bit higher cost, estimated right now at just over 1.1 million, with the match being 225,000. I have included in, in the packet the application form that gives all of the details related to these two bridges, along with kind of the, the project scope, what we intend to replace, with all of the estimates. I've also included a fact sheet related to the off-system bridge program that gives some details on that, and then also a fact sheet on the, for fracture-critical bridges, so the folks have an idea of that. These, these bridges are typically paid out of the Federal Fund Exchange that, we submitted that a few months ago, and I just got a... oh, we submitted that a few months ago and I just got a message just a little bit ago that we received, uh, a check from last year's. So we'll be banking that so that we can do the bridge replacement programs.
Questions on this?
David, uh, what constitutes the width of a bridge or length of a bridge versus a culvert?
Anything over twenty feet is considered a bridge. Anything under twenty feet, even if it's a, even if it looks like a bridge, is considered just a culvert. A, and those are not eligible for, uh, state or federal funding. And we, we've got a, a ton of those as well.
Questions?
So when they go out and do bridge inspections, bridge, bridge inspections, those are not included?
They are not.
They're doing bridge inspections right now, aren't they?
Yeah, and the, the inspections are done. Um, I'm waiting on the final report. It should be here sometime this month.
Will we get new ones?
Yep, yeah, we'll get exactly that. The, the state has had trouble with their bridge, um, inspection portal. Um, lots of different trouble there. There was an email on it again this morning, I haven't read it, but, um, um, so that's been partially the reason for the delay in, in getting that, uh, booklet prepared and sent on to us.
Pretty much a no-brainer that we submit these applications and hopefully get some of this, uh, assistance on these bridges.
Sure.
If there's no more questions, we'll look for, uh, a motion to approve the submittal of two applications for the Kansas Department of Transportation Local Off-System Bridge Program to replace bridge number seventeen dash, or seventeen point six dash twenty and bridge number sixteen point six dash twelve point one. Have a motions or second?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, Texas's staff reports, Derek?
Yeah, the mayor of Ottawa reached out to me here a couple days ago inquiring about whether or not, uh, the board would consider a free dump day at the transfer station to haul away flood debris from this recent storm. And told him that I would be happy to, to put that in front of all of you for consideration. I, that's all that I, I know at this point. I don't know the magnitude of what we're talking about. I, I have very little other info. Uh, if it's something you're interested in, at least considering, I'm happy to figure out what exactly it is we're talking about here. But wanted to get your thoughts preliminarily first.
I'd kind of be curious to have a little more information on what we're talking about. If we're talking about wood, particularly tree limbs and stuff, I think they would have an area to handle that. But I'm not sure what, what they're talking about.
And would you, I mean, it, a free day for everybody or a free day only for flood debris? And then you'd have to verify whether it was flood debris?
Yeah, and I think that, that's a great point. And I think that is where my initial questions came. What is flood debris, what is not? And if we open up a free dump day, are we having a free dump day for anything and everything? And that, it does become problematic in that regard.
Yeah, you see a lot of dumpsters down there at, uh, sixty-eight Main and all those businesses with the carpet and...
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, sure.
All that kind of stuff, so is that what he's talking about? I don't know.
I would assume that it pertains to that area around sixty-eight in Kiakut primarily, yes. And it would be a lot of that, but...
It is uninsured damage. I would, I mean, it sounds like he was just floating an idea, something for us to think about. So if we're asking for more information, I don't know.
And it would need to be done fairly quickly, 'cause you're not gonna just have that stuff laying around for a month until we open the, I mean, I don't know.
Open to... I mean, you could maybe pass something that said, you know, flood victim, but require that they leave their information and an address where it came from, just so it could be... Uh, I mean, if there is fraud, you, you know, I don't think a lot of people are gonna take advantage of it. You're probably talking maybe twenty loads of debris, so, but you would have to have a bit of guts to defraud a charitable thing like that and then leave your name and address, so...
And I think that's, that is a very easy way to handle it, is, yeah, just...
Then we're not talking a bunch of staff time and verifying where it came from, this, that's... I mean, if you do suspect fraud, your department head can go make a phone call, check it out, but... It's probably an adequate amount of due diligence, I would think.
Limited to a set number of hours as well, so that it's not... I mean, if, if it's something that you're, you're interested in, then we can, we could probably define some pretty strict parameters on how that works. And I think leaving name and contact info is a really good idea, so...
Wish you're gonna have somebody or two that, I mean, like you said, doesn't, you don't let it sit there very long. So I can't imagine how many people have already taken loads and said, well, what about the one I already paid for? So that'll be a question too, whether we wanna, uh, go back and pick up a few of those, but...
Not sure whether a certain day makes more sense or just saying flood debris, whenever they bring it, if they can verify it's flood debris, you know, 'cause if, I'm not gonna ha, you know, if they, they're maybe not ready this day or they brought it to, or whatever, just, I don't know.
How about till the end of next week? Um, leave your contact information for flood people. And if you have already dumped, um, submit that to us and we can review it. I would hate to find out that, oh, I, you know, already...
And if they out there have questions about some stuff, let's come in and just let you know and...
Ultimately be well within your spending amount, I would think, so... Do you wanna vote on that? Be down to six?
So through the sixteenth?
Maybe the seventeenth, in case they're off work and wanting to do one last weekend on their own house.
Do the weekend?
Do you wanna vote or just a consensus on it?
I'm going to it.
Uh, I, you know, if you wanna vote on it and, and the motion would read, you know, to authorize free dump day, uh, or free dumping through the seventeenth of August for victims of the recent flood event. And we will ask that they provide their name and contact info, just for the address.
Where the debris came from.
Yeah.
Would make that motion.
You have that on the motion?
Mr. Sotomayor?
Yes.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Mr. Dickinson?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Anybody who's already made dumps that would have been eligible can submit those back to us and we can review those.
Right. Um, David, you, we can talk about this afterward. Filter down to peg and, um... You'll recall recently I told you about a Department of Labor inspection that we had. So every five years, the state sends someone down to inspect our facilities primarily, um, for safety-related issues. Um, we just got our report on that. We fared incredibly well. Um, they were incredibly complimentary of us, um, and told us for a county of our size, we're among the safest that they inspect. So really happy with that. I think it goes without saying that the safety of our employees and, and the safety of the environment that we provide is, is, I mean, if it's not the highest priority, it's right up there. And so there were a handful of very small things that have already been corrected. I mean, so much of this was literally corrected the same day, just, um, very simple things. If, if you have any desire to see that full report, certainly I can provide it to you. But very pleased with how that went. Um, budget meeting tonight, if any of you are expecting, uh, a comprehensive presentation from Janet and I speak now or hold your peace because we, you know, are, we will have something, but our thoughts are literally, we've sat down with you and went through every line of that budget. Um, we've done this in public meetings. We feel it'd be redundant to do so again, so we'll just have some general overview of it. Um, but there haven't really been any changes. I mean, we, we came to you with a refined product at those initial budget meetings and there just wasn't a lot to, to tweak. And so, um, I wouldn't anticipate it being a long evening by any stretch, unless we have members of the public with questions, so... And then today we have the, the new educator and healthcare professional lunch over at Ottawa High School. And that's all I have.
Larry, you have anything else?
I just wanted to, uh, announce again that tomorrow evening we have a, please, session. Or in wind energies, uh, the, the, I have the planning commission here in this room. Uh, or copies of those staff report, definitely.
Yes, Sheriff? Isn't that pretty good, Sheriff?
At the, uh, Pomona Council meeting, um, I did let them know about the, uh, the public budget hearing this tomorrow night. The only question they had was what the county was expected to do with the mill. So I relayed that and we, that it was gonna be a slight decrease. And other than that, they hadn't, they had no questions, um, about the budget in any way. Yesterday was kind of a unique day, as you know, with the sheriff's office. Uh, one of our big programs is our K nine program. And yesterday we actually provided assistance to two of the counties, um, around us with our K nines. Lawrence P D called about midnight last night and wanted help. And so we were up there with our K nines. And then yesterday afternoon, we were over in Osage County helping Highway Patrol and Osage County Sheriff, uh, with some K nine support as well. So, um, that's part of why we, why we have that. They help our county, but we're able to assist the counties around us. And then we exchanged that, 'cause they help us out in other areas as well. So I just wanted to pass that along. And yester, last night, we graduated, I think it was ninety-four kids from a dare camp. And so, um, Dare Camp, this is the second year that it was out at Prairie Star Ranch down by Williamsburg. And it was warm, but, um, it, it went well and it was a, a pretty good camp. And, uh, graduation was very well attended. And so, um, the planning for the, for the next year of, uh, Dare Camp will be starting here in a few days. And so, uh, we'll be sitting down with the, uh, police department and kind of seeing where we go, uh, from there and what the involvement is. So some, I've been asked a little bit about how many county kids, you know, we have anywhere from twenty to twenty-five kids from the county that will go. We've been limited on our numbers, um, as far as how many county kids go that are outside of U S D two ninety. And, um, part of that reason was the, the camp that we had been at, um, space-wise, um, there was, they were kind of outgrowing that. The other, uh, play, the other, uh, reason for keeping the numbers down was the number of counselors that we had. This year we ended up with about four counselors for each team. So we, we are at a point where it looks like we're probably gonna be able to expand those numbers and we'll be working that out with the police department, um, here in the, here in the near future. And the, uh, Police Foundation, who funds the Dare Camp, was a recipient of a, um, of a grant from the Gibson Family Foundation. And so, and that was money is for the Dare Camp. And I believe the money they received for that this year was twelve, twelve thousand dollars roughly and that they received for Dare Camp. So that'll help keep, continue that, that funding. Um, and also just so you all are aware, um, the Sheriff's Foundation was also a recipient of the, of the grant from the, uh, Gibson Foundation. We'll receive an annual, annual contribution from them to the Sheriff's Foundation for our K nine program. Um, this year, the money that we received was between twenty-four and twenty-five thousand dollars to help support our K nine program. As you know, um, there's expense by, not just buying that dog and doing the training, but all the medical expenses and everything else that goes along with that special equipment and, and ongoing training. And so that, that grant, that gift that we have through the foundation is helping dramatically to offset some of that. We just received our, that first payment here recently. And so, uh, we're excited about that and hoping to see that, good, some more good things come out of our K nine program.
How close are you to needing to replace dog?
Um, we have one that when the handler retires, that dog may be ready to retire. Um, our, my biggest concern on, uh, the dogs is what the state is going to do with legalization of marijuana. And, um, all of our dogs are dual-certified with drugs and, uh, and patrol tactics and tracking. It will make it more difficult to train, uh, Maricon, marijuana, um, sensory out of those dogs. And so if the state does choose to do something with that, then we will likely be purchasing another dog that doesn't ever get certified on, on marijuana. Um, I think that's one of those things that the state doesn't always look at as far as how things would be. So, uh, but we're staying on top of that and working with, uh, the people in that, in that industry. So, any other questions for me?
I just wanna go back a little bit on the, the Dare Camp. The sheriff and I have had this conversation about this. I firmly believe that every one of the kids that complete dare in the, uh, rural schools should have the opportunity to go to this camp. Uh, presently, I think it's seven kids. They had to write essays and the top seven essays were picked. I don't like that process at all. I think sometimes the kids that didn't get picked because of their essay may be the kids that really need to be at the camp. But anyway, we've discussed, we kind of have talked about this. If we can make this work where all the kids get the opportunity with the P D, fine. If that isn't gonna work out, then I think we need to look at what it would take to put on our own county Dare Camp.
That's correct.
For, for the rural schools.
Yes, and we have had that, we've had that discussion as well, um, internally, as, uh, the chairman knows, but to let the rest of, you know, we've had that discussion that, um, it's, it's kind of a recent... The two things that are obstacles to overcome, but not impossible, but we will work on it if we need to, is, uh, staffing to get people to, to, volunteers to, to work that. Um, trying to figure out, do we have a weekend-type thing as, as the current one is, which is Sunday, Monday, Tuesday? Do we have a one day? Um, and those can range up to twenty thousand dollars to, to run a camp. So those, so the money and the staffing is kind of what we're looking at.
Anything else for the sheriff?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mitch?
We talked about, um, going ahead and looking at the Health and All Policies Summit. So I've done some work on that, contacted the Kansas Health Institute, um, contacted up there, Tati, Tatiana Lynn. And we are working with her and with, um, the Public Health Law Center out of Minnesota, who has expertise in health policy. Um, with, with our discussion, we would like to propose, or I would like to propose a date of November nineteenth for the summit to invite, of course, you, um, other agency and government leaders, that's a Tuesday, by the way, um, and individuals, if they're interested, to attend this summit. Tentatively, uh, and the, and the funding for the summit can come out of the Pathways Grant. So that would be really good. So somebody from Minnesota with the Public Health Law Center would be attending and helping provide some of the information as well as K H I. But it also would, um, tentatively, uh, include a panel of local individuals and be interactive to discuss any policies, um, that may be of issue here in the county, uh, among the little cities. So it could go anything from, from housing to new development to, um, I mean, it's just a kind of a wide-range tobacco policies, um, all kinds of things. And that, we'll be doing some research to see what community members are interested in, what seems to be the hot issues. So that's just our, our initial discussion. Um, and I would, but I would like to be able to put something on the calendar, a date, and set that aside if November nineteenth would work.
At least.
When's the, uh...
K C's the week prior. The week, the week prior.
And it's not on a Tuesday, so...
Week before.
The week before, yep.
What's the date on the K C?
Or is that, you're talking a long time and...
Gotta get it on the calendar. But if there's other things you'd like to see, or you have questions about that, please let me know, and we'll structure that around that. I think to do it justice, to really look at this approach, will take four, maybe five hours, so we will provide lunch as well, and hopefully invite fifty to sixty people, get a good number of representatives from the county. Thanks.
Okay, so it's raining again.
Hell.
Surprise. We're out working on the road still. The storm that came in this morning, we had one report of a tree down, so we're getting that, that cleared. We've also got a, there's debris all over the roads, so we're, we've got folks out taking care of that. With the expected additional rain over the next several days, we're trying to be a little bit proactive, and so we'll start later today and into tomorrow, activating some of the flood flip signs related to that, and as a result of the last storm, we put together a map. I gave you, each one of you a copy of that, that will post, that has been posted to the website this morning, that shows the areas in the county that are prone to flooding. If you look at the map, there's, there's a lot of, there are well over a hundred different locations through the county that, that are prone to flooding. That's not to say that each one of these locations will flood anytime that it, that it rains, or that there aren't other areas that, that may flood during heavy, heavy rains, but this is a, a general map to give folks an indication of what could happen, gives them a, a, a map that they can look at if they need to evacuate their area, so that they can make good choices on, on which way to go, rather than driving through the water. Also related to the, Alan's not here this morning, but we are gonna have a meeting at the EOC tomorrow to review our actions from the previous event, so that we can be more prepared next time around. It's a, in an effort to continue to refine our processes, so that we can better serve the citizens. Upcoming agenda items that I'm gonna have, I think Friday is our bid opening for the financing for the motor grader, so I hope to have that on next Wednesday's, Wednesday's agenda. I've also been approached by a couple of, a couple of folks to, they would like a stop sign at the intersection of Sand Creek and Utah. There's some sight distance issues right there, so I'm working on getting that put together. That res, it requires a resolution, so I'm getting that information put together. And then the other thing that we would like to discuss with you all is the tire disposal fees out at the, at the transfer station. Currently, we charge a, we've got different amounts for different tires. We have discovered that the disposal fee that we pay to get rid of those tires, in many cases, is higher than what we're actually charging folks. So this is another indication where essentially, if you think about it, everyone is subsidizing the disposal of those tires, possibly. So we would like to bring that before you to have a conversation about maybe raising our, our fees that we charge folks, just to cover those expenses, so I hope to have that in front of me next week as well. Chip seal project, still gonna happen. We had anticipated August, but due to the weather, that's been pushed back into September. We visited with them this morning, and so that, that is what it is.
You know what part of September? I know Princeton was asking, 'cause they're gonna be doing it.
Yep, they're, they're working with the, the same folks. I don't have an exact date. I'm hoping for early to mid-September at the latest, and that's what we'll be pushing for. Fifty-nine and Kingman, that project is now slated to begin on August twenty-ninth. We're in contact with the contractor, and they are, they are aware that, you know, as far as we're concerned, the time, the time it started for that project, so they are losing days, you know, right up until the twenty-ninth, they have lost all of the, the working days up to, back to July fifth, I believe it is. So they are aware of that, and they are aware that if they run past the hundred and thirty-five days, I believe it is, that there will be liquidated damages assessed to them for every day that they are, are late. And so they, they are aware of that, and we're gonna hold firm to that. The other project that's, that was underway is the Pawnee Road Bridge. I haven't been out there since it started raining last Thursday, but I suspect that, you know, they haven't gotten much done due to the weather this last week, so that is, I believe that's all I've got at this point.
Good.
David, I, before we, I think we up put the, the tran-
Okay. Perfect. That's fine.
While we're talking about it, you wanna, when the transfer station comes up, the lifespan of the C and D and. We're right with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I can certainly update you.
Dave, to Mr. Comments and Board Reports. Don, you wanna start?
All right, we started. He went to thank me, a lot of him talk, talk. I want a Don to talk. Yeah, went to the Lake Region RC and D meeting yesterday morning, and much of, much of the meeting, we.
Larry? I got these, if you want these. Never mind. Sorry.
Anyway, I forgot what I was, no. Anyway, much of the meeting was, had a guest speaker, Barbara Anderson. She's a regional project manager, business and community development person. She's not part of the Department of Commerce, but she reports to the Department of Commerce, and she works with cities under five thousand, which is, you know, every, every town in Franklin County except Ottawa. And she's doing a survey throughout her region about what these little communities need to be sustainable, and not, not look to unincorporate for their needs and work with them, and a lot of the problems is they don't have grocery stores, or, you know, access to health, health, and these little communities, and they're, and a lot of them being served by Casey's or Don General, which is not really a grocery store, but they do have some products in that line, and, and she's available for consults to these communities, trying to, you know, help them stay viable and, and be, remain a community in these little, little towns. I had a long discussion with her about what these little communities need to, you know, to remain a community, and Don brought up that November, he's gonna go out and get more bicycles out at Eldorado. They finally set a date for him to go out there and pick up about sixty bicycles, which would be pretty timely for, you know, the Christmas holidays, to have these bicycles available to distribute where they're needed.
Are you talking Ellsworth, not? Are you doing Eldorado now, too? Ellsworth, okay.
Lake Region is gonna get twenty-five thousand dollars from Flood Hill's, RC and D was disbanded, and they had to distribute to the funds to another nonprofit organization in that line of, sort of field. And Don's going to some conferences, he can explain those, the conferences he's going to. I don't know, Don, you might wanna fill me in on some more stuff on that.
Hey, yeah, I kinda like, Roy started off there, yeah, actually, the May, the twenty-five thousand is, it'll go to the State RC and D Council, and then November, we're meeting in November to figure out what direction we wanna go, and one of the things we've done with the Lake Region there lately is get with, working with the Department of Commerce and different organizations, and, and I got in touch with the lady that Rick said was helping Richmond, and working with Fontana right now, the nonprofit organization to help small communities with different projects, and I'm gonna have her come up there. Been working with her, and in November, I'm gonna get her to come up here and speak to our group, too, and try to get her on board. First, I wanted to find out everything she was doing for those organizations before I do a little, just flat do it, you know? But it sounds like, you know, whether working with Richmond and Fontana, it sounds like a pretty good, good deal for communities to bring somebody in like that and offer their services at no charge, you know, and they're professionals at it. I did attend the Rantoul meeting last night, Monday night, Monday night, lost track of my date, and they announced that they, that, and they're doing their audit right now, and they're about halfway through their audit with their, and they're updating us on the ordinance collision, that right now, I believe it's Richmond, Rantoul, and Princeton, right now that are signed up to go with that. They're still working with the others, see if any of the others will kinda lean into it, but right now, that's where that's found. They were approached by, if you know, a few years ago, Cutler Township inherited a big community building down in Rantoul. It was individually owned by a nonprofit group that built that building, and then they donated it to the township that they own it. Well, the fire department is located in Rantoul City Hall. They rent half of that building, it's been there for years and years. Well, I don't know the offer, it'll happen or not, but I know they've been approached by the township about swapping buildings, and that, 'cause the township runs the fire department, but yet the fire department is in City Hall, so, and that's just a discussion, that don't mean it's gonna happen or not happen, they just, they put a brand-new roof on City Hall down there and everything, so there'd have to be a lot of discussion about, it's just not as simple as moving from one building to another. Their City Hall, like I said, has had a lot of new upgrades, plus it has an opening in the back where they store their city equipment and everything, which they don't wanna have that over. A lot bigger building over the community building, but it doesn't have that kinda storage or equipment, so I can kinda let you know how that goes later on. That's pretty well, everything else is pretty basic. I know they did discuss ditching on the, on the east out of town, on our link, county link through there, and they talked, they talked with a company about, they know they're responsible for the drainage, they've had a lot of trouble with that drainage along there, and they've been in contact with a company, talking about coming in there and redoing that ditch. I'm sure they'll get in touch with you for, I know it's not their responsibility, they still should get ahold of you guys and let you know what they're, but they hadn't approved it yet, but they did get a bid from a, a company, and they are discussing it, and that'll help us, too, so, you know, that's all I got.
Did the Food Policy Council meeting, most of the discussions centered around the mobile food pantry, which is really catching on, they showed a graph as far as use units, very definite upward trajectory. Other than that, had a few conversations, phone calls with folks about roads, not entirely negative. One person works, lives in our county, but works for another public works department, just acknowledged that it's a bad situation, they're doing good with what they have, just a big, big task, and I saw Pat in here earlier, our building inspector, seems like at least once or twice a month, I get a compliment on how good Pat's doing, so it's good to know that somebody with that much contact and outward interaction with the public, especially somebody in a regulatory capacity, can have so many positive interactions, so.
Had a busy week, this is gonna take a while.
Thursday, I had a unique opportunity to view the flood damage from the back of a Red Cross vehicle, as I am just shadowing the, the guys, and the Vol, the Red Cross was invited to the EOC meeting, the Emergency Operations Command, and it was amazing to see that group of people, city officials, county officials, road, emergency responders, and the way that they all came together to deal with the situation that we were dealing with, with the flooding, both in the city of Ottawa and out in the county, with the number-one priority being the safety of our citizens. You have a pretty great group of people out there. That evening was the gathering at the hospital where we officially became Advent Health, and it was pretty awesome that they remembered the legacy of the ransom name by rededicating the main building as the ransom building. And then I got an opportunity to attend nine of the eleven block parties, and Sheriff, please tell your wife, I only ran out of time, I tried, which was, was a great time to just get out there and meet people in the, at the county. On Friday morning was a chamber coffee recognizing the new leadership Ottawa class, of which fifteen, four of the fifteen members are Franklin County employees. Cassie Harmon from the HR Department, David Huckabee from the County Attorney's Office, Tammy Alexander, who works in the jail, and our own Tammy Hoffner. And then First Friday Forum, a lot of it was taken by giving a flood update, and then the program was USD two ninety, giving a program about their new standards-based grading. On Saturday, I volunteered a couple of hours for ECAN at Fill the Bus at Walmart, and then on Monday, I went to the Princeton Regular City Council. Their main items were, they still have a playground that needs to go up, and every time they schedule a day, they get rained out, so I think at this time, they're going to see how much it would cost just to have the people come in and do it, and not have community volunteers, and then hopefully it'll get done. And then they also had their budget meeting and approved their budget last night. And I know Larry Walrod was not at the mic, so tomorrow evening at six forty-five is the study session of the Planning Commission, where they'll be discussing renewable energy systems, so anybody that has an opinion that would like to, or just wants more information, should be there, and if you can't be there, and you, do you have an opinion, please contact your county commissioners, and I think that's it.
Okay, I also attended the hospital the other, the other day, too, along with a couple of the other commissioners, and last, Monday night, I attended Williamsburg City Council. One of the main things they talked about is they're looking into chip and seal on all their streets in Williamsburg. They've been dealing with some people on the financing part of it, they have an idea what it would cost them, they think with the bonds and the interest rate at where it's at, they're looking at trying to make that happen, and it sounds like they're pretty serious about it, and sounds like they're probably gonna be able to get it done, so it may be down the road a ways, but that is something that they've been discussing, and with, like I said, with the bonds and the people they're working with, sounds like they're pretty serious about trying to do that. I think they said right now that they're looking at, it would cost over the period of the financing something like ten dollars a residence in Williamsburg added on to their water bill at this point, so. Anyway, we'll see what happens there, they're still working with their people on that, see if this is gonna work. They had talked about an appointment to the wholesale district, Water District Twelve. Nothing was decided on that last night, but they're gonna- Nothing was decided on that last night, but they're going to need to appoint somebody to that. Done some work on the City Hall, they just had an update on where they're at on their City Hall improvements. And their budget hearing is Thursday night at six thirty. And they have several stop signs in town that's fading out. They talked about replacing those. And that's pretty much extended that meeting. And then yesterday, had the FCD, the Executive Board meeting. Still in the process of working on getting a director for that. And we have another meeting, I believe, Tuesday on that, where that process is still ongoing. And that was most of what took up the Executive Board meeting yesterday. And that's pretty much all I've been to.
I just want to tell I Ann, I went to the best law party location at the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Great food, Derek stopped by, our ambulance people stopped by with their ambulance and a fire truck came by, so it was a great event, great event.
Rick, before you shut this down, I just got an email from HR. County employees are eligible for discounted tickets to the Kansas City. Do it. My understanding is that it goes every year.
Do you have a costume I can borrow? Okay, we have the budget hearing tonight at six o'clock, right here. We have commission meeting next Wednesday. Is that eleven forty-five on the luncheon today, Tammy? I was thinking of something like that.
Yeah.
Eleven forty-five at the high school, for those that signed up to go to that. I believe that's all have right now, anyone have anything else? Not, would look for a motion to adjourn.
What's to adjourn?
Have a motion as our second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign.